... board meeting, President of the Board of Trustees, Villasburg County, Illinois. Day of December tenth, two thousand nineteen. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call by Trustee Cap for him to have a look.
Trustee Cap, here. Trustee Bonner.
Present.
Trustee Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Greer.
Here.
Trustee Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Claybrook.
Here.
Thank you for forming the President's List for President.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any approval or corrections about the minutes of the rest of the board meeting that were held from November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen? Any corrections to the minute? Are there no corrections to the minute because we have a motion to approve the minutes for November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes in November twenty-sixth.
A motion by Trustee Clay, both approve the minutes, any second?
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Cap. Will you take a look?
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner.
Present.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook.
Yes.
Yes, motion passed, thank you. Before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to state to the board, you would give us your name and your reason for addressing the board. And keep your comments for three minutes, please. I'll ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
There's a motion as well by Trustee Richardson to open the meeting to the public. Could we have a second, please?
A second.
Second by Trustee Greer. Can you take a look, please?
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. The meeting is now open to the public, this side? This side? That side?
Hi, my name is Pat Olson. And I had a couple of questions about the EPA loan. Have we gotten anywhere on debt? What's happening with it? I mean, are we just in limbo? Is it?
Well, um...
I mean, I know you've said a couple of times they would like you to increase the water rates even more to get up. You know, I just, you know, it's, it's like we're coming up on the two-year mark of an increase in water rates. And that's partially what I wanted to talk about. I was just doing some calculations. I just got my latest water bill and, and, you know, we're at the double rate. So I was calculating it out, like thirty dollars of sewer surcharge, which we never had, times eleven hundred, and I'm being conservative, I think there's like twelve hundred and some meters, I was just using eleven hundred. Households comes to thirty-three thousand dollars a quarter, times four quarters in a year is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, times almost two years is two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. Plus, I just took mine, and I'm a single household, I actually used only forty-two-hundred gallons for the quarter. But taking that times the water and sewer rate came to forty-one dollars and fifty cents. So that's like an increase of twenty dollars per quarter, using the same formula, times eleven hundred households, equals twenty-two thousand, times four quarters is eighty-eight thousand, times the two years is a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Take those two figures together, a hundred and seventy-six thousand times plus the two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand from the sewer charge is an extra four-hundred-and-forty-four, or four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars when we hit the actual two-year mark, which is in a couple of months. And I'm wondering, like, is that money just going into a fund to say we can afford the meters? Or, I believe, I haven't been to a meeting in quite some time, but the last meeting I was at, you had stated that we'd already started and that we were gonna start on the old side of Burnham.
That's true.
I know a lot of people.
Want me to address these? I can take all of them if you want.
I know a lot of people, and I've never heard of anybody that's gotten a new meter yet.
We haven't officially started, but we have done a pile, we've installed four.
You've installed four meters?
Yes, and we're running a test on those and...
Okay. Okay, and is Cal City Plumbing getting a contract then? Are they doing it? Okay. And then, I know it's late in the year, but if we go on a weather break, is there any chance the last two blocks of Mackinaw can get patched? It's, it's like dodging for a flat tire on those last two blocks. A hundred and forty-second and a hundred and forty-third of Mackinaw are just pitiful.
Well, I think it's kind of late in the season now, but we did do some patching this year, we did Green Bay, a hundred and forty-first, a hundred and forty-second in Green Bay. And Mackinaw did not appear to be as bad as Green Bay, but we're saying we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it will not be as bad.
And then, the last question I had, I don't know if Stanley wants to address it or anything, but are we, there's a state law that we have to have like a minimum amount in the pension fund for the police and the public works people, is that true? Are we at it? Or, I mean, when I see my tax bill, it makes it look like we have a huge deficit.
There's some major, major changes going on with the police and fire pension funds throughout the entire state. In the keynote session, Springfield was passed a, a complete revamping of all pension funds, downstate pension funds, which means anything outside the city of Chicago.
Okay.
And...
Which would be us?
... to consolidate all the pension funds, money. There's gonna be a police super fund.
Uh-huh.
Retirement, as well as a fire pension fund for retirement.
Okay.
The mechanics will win, and how that's going to occur, no one knows for sure right now because they haven't announced the rules. They passed the law, now all the funds are gonna be taken over by the state.
Okay.
And the state is gonna manage all the monies for all police officers and retirement funds in the state of Illinois, as well as the firefighters. How they're going to accomplish that, the rules haven't been implemented or announced at this time. But it's gonna be, I imagine, over the next six, six to nine months, we'll start getting some information on how they're going to do it. Traditionally, just about every pension fund, police and fire in the state, it's been what they call underfunded. And every time it gets, the can gets kicked down the road by the state. You can, you know, do this, you can do this, you can amortize it over so many years. So this thing is not something that was created yesterday.
Right.
This issue was started over forty years ago, when I first started representing pension funds. And it's always been that way. It's something that, that has occurred because the pension funds, police and fire, are limited into what they can invest. If you're limited to only drawing one or two percent interest on your investments...
Mm-hmm. It's not gonna keep up. Right.
You cannot invest in your stock markets like some, like the IMR, you know? They're making eight, nine percent, and the state projections are based, based upon the IMR, which are making eight, nine percent, and you're only turning two percent.
Right.
That's where you're going.
Okay. I just would like to add one more thing, like, uh, that figure that I gave you, that's assuming the bills are getting paid. Are you noticing that more people, because of the increase in the water bill, that you're getting more people falling behind, or?
Well, I just basically said that some people were kind of sore when the process first was implemented, but more than one person, I mean, more than one person, more than two people, you know, have said, well, it's really not as bad as I thought it was gonna be. And it's really just kind of, I mean, a lot of it is based on consumption. And once we change the meter out, then people can readily observe that more regularly, and they really can stay on top of it. So, well, as far as the figures that you gave, some of the expenditures, you know, for the village are very enormous at times. And I had announced at the last meeting that the water main break that we had on the seventh of November, that cost us at least thirty thousand dollars to get that up and running.
Where was that at?
I mean, Pidda, Chicago, so it's a, the water be up thirty-seven thousand dollars, which we think is not correct, but right now, that's what they sent us, so we got...
Where was the water main break at?
From Torres.
From Torres.
Torres, it was Torres. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there no questions?
I don't think we addressed the first question, though, about the water. We, we have had experts at meetings, and we decided to not go with the EPA loan.
Oh, you did?
We're gonna do it on our own and save some money.
Okay. I have not heard that.
Yeah, that's, we talked about it several meetings, and we had several people there.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna...
Gonna just like self-fund it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the EPA is not gonna be involved with any loan with us or anything?
Not at all.
Okay.
We're gonna self-fund it.
Yeah, first thing I wanted to point out, last time I was here, Mayor, I complimented you on getting back to me as quickly as you did with any kind of questions or whatnot that I had through the cell phones. And for whatever reason, I've been bringing up only financial questions to you, to yourself, and I haven't heard back from you in almost a week now, and I just, I just appreciate if we get back to where we were. And maybe we just keep the communication line going, I'm just trying to communicate with you and the board, and hopefully that...
Well, let me say, I think the last text that I sent you, I think I said that, that no matter what it is that we give you, that we send you, that you are not pleased with, and it's probably safe to say you will not get any type of help me doing this right now.
Okay, Mayor, if you put yourself in my shoes over here, the night that the auditor came in, I'm not, this isn't a question. I was sitting there, and I'm the only one that had a question for the auditor. You had the auditor speak after you closed the meeting to the public, and that was just premeditated. And she spoke, you slipped her in, she spoke, she slipped out. What am I supposed to do with a resident? You wouldn't let me ask her a question. My simple question was, the new, but, the new audit did start in seventeen, but that's not what the audit said. That's what I tried to portray to you and everybody else in the board, but you wouldn't let me speak about it. That's the only reason why I brought that up.
Trustee Cap, you won't think that. I don't know if I can answer that anymore.
Okay.
I think that's not...
It said, the basis of accounting section, it said you were still using the old method. That's the only reason why I even brought it up. I said, you guys didn't change, you get the audit said. It's a moot point at this point, but...
No, I think we...
That's what it said.
We were forced to change the statement.
I know that, but, you know what I'm saying? I was right, and you guys were right as well. Okay, my next question concerning, when you raised the water rates, you guys stipulated that it was specifically for the replacement of the water meters, to get the loan. That was it. I suggested at the town hall, Burnham School, that it was, you know, trying to get the debt down. And you and John went back and forth, we know, we didn't say nothing about the debt, it's only about the loan. Well, the loan's no longer happening now, as we just found out five minutes ago. If in fact, the water rate increases specifically for changing water meters, and you just said we only had four water meters changed so far? Was it two or three months ago, Cal City Plumbing came in here and said they were gonna be getting them done at a certain pace? I didn't write that down. One, why has it taken so long for them to replace them? And two, you just suggested, Mayor, that you got a lot of expenditures, which is understood, but this is all new money. The surtax itself is, has broadened in over two-hundred grand in the time since you started in May first of two thousand eighteen. That's gotta be four or five-hundred grand in by now, and that was supposed to be, the water rate was specifically for the water meter replacement. That's why I'm wondering, why has it taken so long? How long is it gonna take for Cal City Plumbing to get going on it? Do you even have an answer? I don't know if you came prepared for that.
And that's your question? Is that it?
That was my que, you're not gonna answer my question, though. You said they replaced four meters. How long is this gonna take for Cal City Plumbing to do it? Because you have already gotten more than half the money to replace them.
And do you have another question?
Are you gonna answer that one first?
I, I think at the last meeting, you said that we have a estimated completion date around possibly the middle of the year of two thousand twenty.
I'm actually giving a good estimate.
But we're gonna start after the first of the year in the spring?
Well, if I have my way, they'll start next week, if they'll see... Let's see.
Right, they'll probably do the indoor ones first, start with those, the ones that are, that are known to be faulty.
Yeah, I have to make them a form. Did I ask?
No, I wanted to ask you two quick questions, then. One, you've, since I've been coming here about two years or so, you guys have been spending the money, you said, you wouldn't address the debt that we have, but you have been buying the twelve-seat van, you bought the, the second pickup truck for public works, you said it was necessary, et cetera, et cetera. Well, we have to be in debt, you won't state how much, but my question for you is, can you name maybe the top two things that you cut back on as far as spending in the past two years?
Well, I think it's safe to say that the village of Burnham, if any of the sponsor municipal government would not spend any more than they need to spend, and it puts in a sense that then we could...
Can you cut, what have you cut back on, though?
That we would govern ourselves accordingly. Do you have anything else?
Yes, when will the audit be due? Luce told me it'll be coming out tonight, presented to the, to the board tonight.
Well, the audit was here today, so it's been working.
So you don't have a date?
Right now, right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, another question. I would ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public. Trustee Garcia, could we have a second?
Second.
The second by Trustee Claybrook. Can you take a look?
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook.
Yes. Thank you, motion passed, the meeting is now closed to the public. Well, I'd like to say welcome everyone here today, and we have a, 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 a seminar yesterday to deal with tax appeal. And there's some forms here, and this is for fraud. Now, there are some people, there are some people, I mean, right now, they're staying in their homes, and they think they own the home, somebody else has taken the home away from them, they don't know it. So if you wanna fill out one of these forms and give them your phone number, they just send you a text, and in the event an alert comes to your property, somebody's trying to do something like that, so you could do that. So, I mean, just for the record, I mean, people are stealing people's homes, they're like they're stealing your money out your bank account, same thing.
How are they doing that? How are they doing that?
Well, they can go and change the deeds and all the other stuff that they do, so, and by the time they find out about it, sometimes it's too late, so. And, and also, senior exemptions, senior, I mean, the senior exemptions of people that's over sixty-five, sixty-five or older, if your total household income is sixty-five thousand or less, you qualify for it. In order for you to get the senior freeze, you have to have sixty-five thousand or less. Now, if you qualify for a senior freeze, then you will automatically get the senior exemption. I mean, but if you get the senior exemption, it does not mean that you necessarily get the, um, your home, your senior, a senior freeze. One is based on income, and the other is just based on the fact that you're sixty-five or over. Okay. And the other thing is that our lift station is, is kind of in, it's in a bad repair, the ceiling is falling out, I mean, as of the other day, so, Dewayne, we need to take a look at that down there pretty soon, so, we actually couldn't get anybody to work on, need somebody to shoot some concrete up in the ceiling. So, that part of the money, with this sort of money, would be, uh, replaced there sometime in the near future. Okay, at this time, we had announced, a couple of meetings ago, one of our parks, Cottage Park, is underwater. It's been underwater for a couple of years, and in the past, in the summertime, it would drain, but the sun would evaporate the water, but for the last couple of years, that has not been happening. And so it's constantly underwater, and we applied for a grant, and Dave Shiller, our engineer, had come in here tonight to explain how the grant is gonna work.
Yes, over the summer, MWRD, who you pay your taxes to, to treat your sanitary sewage and manage the stormwater throughout the county, they announced their second round of what they call green infrastructure funding, and that was a grant opportunity. It was pretty restrictive, you can't just go and put pipes in the ground because that just lets that water go into the sewer system, and they have to treat it, and it fills up the pipes. So what we submitted for Cottage Park is a green solution to get the water out of the park, so that would be to regrade it into swales, put some more absorbent soil, put some native plantings that soak up the water more, so we can grade to drain the water to where we need, where, you know, away from the playground, away from the tennis courts, and get them into bases where they can not be a nuisance, and the park can be useful. So we are going back and forth with MWRD now on the intergovernmental agreement, which will come before the board when it's finalized, and once the board passes it, we can get started. So we're looking at some ideas now on the design, that we can kind of get ahead of that and get that project completed over the summer.
And who calls less?
We've been given fifty thousand dollars, so I think that's plenty to, for some grading and some planting, that we can really make a difference at that park.
So fifty thousand will pretty much cover the whole project?
I believe so. That was the amount we requested, based on an estimate that I had put together, so I'm pretty confident, based on similar projects we've done with this grant in other communities.
That's phenomenal, that is phenomenal, that's phenomenal. If there's any monies left over, is it possible to put anything toward Blackmore, or is it strictly just for Cottage?
Right, the grant was for Cottage Park in the grant application, it's boxed out where it will be spent. So unfortunately, it's, it's like most grants where you'll put the plans together, you'll bid the project, and if it comes in under, you might leave some money on the table.
And, and I'm sorry, you probably said this, so we've, we've got approved for the grant, the grant is ours?
Yes, that is a hundred percent.
Oh, wow.
So we just have to get the, the agreement in place to actually spend the money.
Burnham is making progress, Burnham is making great progress, don't listen to anybody doing that, don't...
So right now, you're just basically working on the final license and contract agreement, right?
Yes, they, they have kind of a boilerplate agreement that they use for any time they give the localities money, so it's, it's basically just filling in the blanks.
Excuse me, where did you say the money came from?
The Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. And I guess the, what I forgot to mention is, they, they do these grants because, especially in a place where, like Burnham, where you have combined sewer, every drop of water that goes into your sewer system has to be treated at the plant at a hundred and thirtieth. So as much water as they can keep out of that system, they're saving money, which saves you guys money, because you all pay them in your tax bill.
And that's, that area is sanctioned for wildlife sanctuary.
Yes, the, the other side, yep, it's all, it's all kind of drains there.
And what's, do you, what timeline do you foresee for this?
Depending on, they, they said in their award letter that they anticipate having final agreements within six months, and that was in November at some point, so I'm hoping that, that's on the conservative side, and we can get an agreement in place in spring so we can still construct. I mean, you can't, you don't really wanna plant in July, August, because it's just too hot. So I'm hoping we can get everything graded by then, so we can plant in the fall planting season.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Okay, well, like I said again, I'm in the village, we are moving forward progressively, and we're working with other, other governmental bodies, and helping us out to do certain things, so, you know, there are many people that I call upon to assist the village in doing certain things, so it's working pretty well for us. So we just keep up the good work, and we are continuing to move forward, I think.
Okay, the clerk is absent, uh, to Trustee Greer, the public educator, he has saved him out of there.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And I'd like to welcome all of our residents who are coming out this evening, and for the ones who couldn't come out and watching us by way of YouTube. Thank you. I have a note from Chief Andy Herbert to Mayor Pope, Trustees Greer, Richardson, Claybrook, Cap, Bonner, Garcia, Luce, Christine, Stephanie, Dewayne, Stanley, Nick, and all of my friends and colleagues at the Village of Burnham. Words are not adequate to express my thanks for your honoring me at the village board meeting, how appropriate it was just before Thanksgiving. I will surely miss working with all of you. Thank you especially for the plaque and the tablet, I use it daily. I wish all of you and the people of the Village of Burnham a joyful holiday season, and peace and prosperity for the future. Warmly, Andy Herbert, Chief. And he surely will be there, so, so. I have a few announcements, I'll be, you know, I'm over the Department of Public, Education, Health, Safety, and Welfare. So it goes on and on, but I have a few important announcements, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. The Illinois Department of Transportation is asking all people to take a survey, and we're doing online. They would like your opinion about traveling on the state roads, and they're gonna ask questions like, are they clean roads, they're gonna ask questions about bad drivers, but you can take this survey, there's a website, it's called i dot I L L dot com, and it's from the Illinois Department of Transportation. Trump, new food stamp rule could affect a hundred and forty thousand recipients in the state of Illinois alone. And, and this will start in two thousand twenty. Many people will lose their SNAP benefits, because you have to have a job in order to receive SNAP benefits. I know a lot of politicians are beginning to protest this ruling, so I don't know how far it's going to go, but we'll, I'll keep you informed, there are so many people that are out of work, in between jobs, wages are low, and they need these benefits. So I'll let you know how, as I get more information on that, how this is going. And as you know, our marijuana law was signed by a governor, and will take effect January the first, two thousand twenty. And Illinois is the seventh state to legalize recreational marijuana. And there are, there are so many rules that goes along with this. You cannot smoke in public places, that's outdoors and in public buildings. Public place means a, a place where a person can be observed, but where you can be observed by others. You cannot smoke your motor vehicle on school buses, private residence that are used, like for daycare centers, center facilities. So there are a lot of rules and regulations that goes along with this law being passed.
I don't think you're smoking your poi, either, Ben.
I think you do.
No, not invisible by your neighbors.
Right.
You can't get a view, public view. So you're not, which is a good spot.
So there's so many stipulations. Line dancing will resume January the eighteenth, two thousand twenty, from ten, ten a.m. to twelve noon. For all of you smokers, there will be an increase on cigarettes. You can expect to pay an extra one dollar to two dollars and ninety-eight cents, and this, this does not include local taxes. As you know, minimum wages across the state will start in twenty, it's fifteen dollars by twenty, by twenty, by twenty twenty-five. The first increase will go into effect January the first, and that will go from eight dollars and twenty-five cents to nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Then on July the first, which is the fiscal year for the state of Illinois, minimum wages will increase to ten dollars per hour, followed by one dollar increase each year until it hits fifteen dollars in the year of two thousand twenty-five. If you're purchasing a gift card, make sure there's a scam, so make sure that you pay close attention to the gift cards that you're gonna purchase, because there's a scam that's going on, so pay, pay close attention to that. As you know, census starts April the first, two thousand twenty, and if you don't want surveys coming to your door, you can do the survey online. Your response to the two thousand twenty census is safe, secure, and is protected by the federal law. Your answers can only be used to produce statistics, they cannot be used against you in any other way. By law, all responses to the United States Census Bureau household and business survey are kept completely confidential, so they... So they don't care how many people living in your home, etc. They just need statistics. And this is to help us. It can help us, the government, to make decisions. It can attract new businesses to our area. It can plan future government services. It can keep us abreast of medical research, which is very important. It can understand the needs of our area. And it can determine areas that are eligible for housing or for rehabilitation rooms. So the census is very important and I cannot stress enough that please fill out your survey when it's time and get it back in. You know, there's a new law that if you're looking for a job, your employer cannot ask you about your wage history. If they do, they can be penalized. So don't forget, and if you know that someone is doing that, probably eliminate the problem later. Okay, so, very important. So, and I would like to say happy holidays to each one of you. Enjoy your holidays. Spend time with your family and your loved ones. And value each day because tomorrow is now promised to each one of us. And as you hear on the news and you read in the newspaper, so many things are happening each and every day. And especially watch your children, your grandchildren when you're going into the stores. Keep them close to you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. The line dancing that's going to resume on January twentieth, on January eighteenth, okay, that's at the same, oh, I'm sorry, at the community center. And that time is at ten AM?
Yes.
And there are ages for that?
Well, it was, it started out for seniors, but anyone's really welcome to come.
And that's free?
Yes.
Ten to twelve, right?
Oh yes.
Oh wonderful.
And it's one of the best exercises in the world. And it's a lot of fun. And we get a lot of people from the township that join us each, on the services that we have. I don't have that.
Yeah, go ahead and present that out so it's. That's open to the public, right?
Oh, I think it says it's open.
We did that last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
No, but it says the event's on December twelfth.
No, no, it's going to be the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
It'll be the nineteenth.
Okay. So, okay, the Village of Burnham Christmas baskets and the Burnham Family Department Toys for Tots. The event will be held on Thursday, December the nineteenth, at the Village Community Center.
And will we be accepting donations for that event prior to, up until?
Yes, it says it on there.
Do they have to bring the donation here to the building?
A toy. Okay, and if anybody would like to donate a toy, please go bring it free to bring it to the village. If the event is on the nineteenth, probably by the seventeenth?
Yeah, that's on the Tuesday, right? Yeah, that's a good thing.
And if it's already wrapped, if you can indicate if it's for a boy or girl and what age?
Are you talking about, excuse me?
Well, the school puts some, the school puts some families on there. Other people just call up and put their names on there. And most of the people, they do it every year, so it's kind of repetitive.
And if you know of anyone, have them, if you know of family in Burnham that could be a blessing or receive this blessing, call the village hall, seven oh eight, eight six two, nine one five zero, to provide their name, address, and telephone number.
Yes.
What I would be able to say, Dave, the Christmas baskets, Toys for Tots.
Yeah.
Sometimes people are, you know, embarrassed, you know, they don't, you know, so if we know someone, call for them, then would they get a call or how would they know?
If we know the call, yes.
Put someone's name on the list.
Now, if they want to pick it up, if they don't want to deliver it to them, then they can, then they can make that known.
That's great. Thank you board. Thank you board. That's awesome.
May I, what time will the basket be delivered or passed out?
It'll be after seven PM.
That's gonna be nice.
Well, just since we were talking about that, I just wanted, Ethan wanted to know, you can pass the word on, that the Thorntown Township has a wonderful food program. And they have a food center. It's very nice. And if you know of anyone that's in between jobs or need that service, let me know. I can give you the number. And if you don't want to go by yourself, I'd be more than happy to go with you. But it's there for anyone in need. So, and that is located in Harvey, on Page January. It's a wonderful, wonderful place and they will assist anyone that is in need.
All right, thank you both. We have your information. Public Works and Villas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I only have a few things today. The leaf collector has been out covering the village, picking up the leaves. Even though the staff has been a little shorthanded, I think we've been pretty good. And that's all I have.
You know, Dwayne has done a lot of extra work and tried to make up a while, but you know, fell away. I picked the leaves and whatnot. And home, what, it's supposed to be, for the last day, there was a, I mean, a pickup schedule. That was November twenty-two. However, they have picked up over the last couple of months. So hopefully this will be the last month and people will put anything out. Okay, thank you, trustee Claybrook, I mean, Arthur Revolution and Planet, trustee Claybrook.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to pass or not pass on Resolution Number twenty nineteen R zero one zero, Hammond Water Works Water Supply Agreement, Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash R zero one zero, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Burnham, Burnham, and the Hammond Water Works Department for the connection to and furnishing of a supply of water from Chicago Water System to the Village of Burnham.
I can't hear you.
No, that's the paper.
No. It should be, should be from Hammond Water. We can correct that. And I'll furnish a corrected copy tomorrow.
Okay. So are there any questions about that?
Are there any changes?
Um, changes, but not in the rate. They charge the eighty-eight, point eighty-eight percent, twelve percent, that's what the city should call it.
So, so everything is pretty much the same?
Yeah, except there are two, two people that have changed who buy water from us that are not within our jurisdiction. So, the language is to the names of those entities that buy water from us. I'd be changed to be the current ones, plus I added language that their successors and interests. Because you don't want to be changing this every time someone changes hands. We're limited to what the constituents and the purchasers of the Village of Burnham. But with the Hammond source line, there are two arenas over there, right river, that receive water from us that are actually in, outside of our jurisdiction or are sliced there at the Bronx, Kedmet City. So we had to put into this agreement who they are. The old agreement had the previous owners of the property.
Okay, that's the old.
Changed the, you know, it's the ABC used to own it, now X Y Z owns it. We added additional language, or their successors and interests, so we don't have to come back and change it every year.
Thank you for that.
Are there any other questions?
I make a motion to pass Resolution Number twenty nineteen R zero one zero, Hammond Water Works Water Supply Agreement, Resolution Number twenty nineteen R dash zero one zero, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Burnham and the Hammond Water Works Department for the connection to and furnishing of a supply of water from Hammond Water System to the Village of Burnham.
Okay, Claybrook, so if you make your motions, I'll give you a second.
I'll second it. Trustee Cap? Yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. My motion passed. Thank you.
I'm doing my job and Lucy's job today. Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the Village of Burnham aggregated levy for two thousand nineteen for the purpose of compliance with the truth and taxation law is being three million four hundred thousand dollars. The aggregated amount was determined based on the two thousand and eighteen tax extension grand total of three million one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Multiply the amount by a hundred and five percent and round off the amount.
Any questions from the board on that?
Yes, so that's a five percent increase?
Yes.
Can I get a second? That's a five percent increase?
Well, I didn't actually calculate it.
It's a hundred and five percent. That's five percent.
It often does go to above that.
It's not quite. Any other question? I make a motion to approve the Village of Burnham aggregated levy for two thousand nineteen for the purpose of compliance with the truth and taxation law is being three million four hundred thousand. The aggregated amount was determined based on the two thousand and eighteen tax extension grand total of three million one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Multiply the amount by a hundred and five percent and round off the amount.
Here's a motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve the aggregated levy for two thousand nineteen. If you have a second, please. Second.
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to pass or not pass on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash O dash zero zero nine and ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand nineteen, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, six oh six three, three dash two zero eight one.
Can I make a motion for that, trustee?
I make a motion to pass ordinance two thousand nineteen dash O dash zero zero nine and ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand nineteen, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, six oh six three, three dash two zero eight one.
So that's a motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve this tax levy ordinance. Do we have a second, please?
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
That's all I have.
My motion passed. Thank you. And I would like to say, even though that this amount levy, I mean, once we levy the amount, if that amount doesn't come in, then that shortens the amount of operating revenue. And I believe, correct me if I'm right, attorney, that if we levy a certain amount for the police department under this new pension bill, and if that amount doesn't come in because it was appealed by the railroads or whoever appealed it, sometimes that will hold up the appeal for six months, eight months, or whatever the case is. I believe, you correct me if I'm wrong, that we'll have to make that up in the interim.
Ultimately, the village is going to be responsible.
Okay, thank you. Public Utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Cedar will be at the community center on Saturday, this coming Saturday, from ten to two, taking applications for assistance with your public utilities, your light and your gas. Make sure you call into the village hall and speak with one of the clerks to schedule yourself an appointment. Pass it on to your neighbors and friends. When you come, the documents that you need to bring are social security cards for every member in the household, the last thirty days proof of income for those that are working, your current light and gas bill, a disconnection notice if you have one. So, there are still appointments available to just call in and schedule one.
And so how did we pass all that in, flyers to the people?
It's been kind of word of mouth because Cedar has a good thing. They don't want you doing flyers. So.
In other words, they don't want a whole lot of people to do that.
But they're going to do it from two to two. Now, I know last time they were here, they worked until everyone came.
I've been called.
They did, they did. And also, on the nineteenth of December, the village is in the process of going green. And we have a company that's working with us to help promote that. They will be at the community center on the nineteenth. And they're going to talk about what they do and sign people up to have these services. They go in and do what they call energy efficiency by changing a little thing on your water spout, your faucets. They have several things, but they're going to talk about what they do. And they're going to sign people up that are interested in having it. And they will be giving away turkeys until they're gone.
And they'll also insulate the piping on your hot water heater so that if, or even, but not, not escape out of that and insulate your door and your attic or whatever.
So they're here on the fourteenth also?
The nineteenth at what time?
Five, five, five thirty. You know, we're going to try to get in and do that before the baskets are given to you.
Is that called weatherization?
Yes, we call it that.
They do an airflow test for your home to see if, you probably don't know anything about that.
Can you be efficient?
You know, they may do that.
They probably do.
But anyway, they'll be at the community center as well. And they'll be signing up anyone that's interested. So that's Thursday, December nineteenth.
Thank you for that report, trustee. We have a possible preparation by the bottom.
Good evening. I want to first start by saying happy holidays to everyone. And I want to say thank you to our community center workers, Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Tanya. You guys are phenomenal. You guys are so instrumental in our success as a village with these young people. And we really appreciate what you do. And thank you to the rest of our volunteers. Thank you. Kedmet Memorial Park District will have holiday camp. The first session, twelve twenty-four through twelve twenty-seven. And there will be no camp on twelve twenty-five. The times are from seven AM to six PM, and that's kindergarten through eighth grade. And the second session is twelve thirty to one three, to January third. And again, the times are seven AM to six PM. Each session is a hundred dollars. Your winter brochure should be in the mail. Also, afternoon with the stars. Seniors fifty-five and better from twelve to four PM at the Sandwich Center. It'll be food, music, dancing, live music. It's ten dollars per person in a band. And that's going to be at the Sandwich Center. And that's on twelve fourteen, fifty-five and better. And that's all I have.
I thank you, trustee Bonner. We had a presentation, petitions, and communications, memorials. I don't remember, did we, did we do a memorial for office the last meeting?
Yes.
We did. Okay, thank you. The rest, Monty said, is there any unfinished business?
I have something left.
Okay.
Yeah, I forgot to mention this in my report. I just wanted to come in the public works department on a job they did with the lighting, Christmas lights and decorations and everything.
You wanted to take in a donation, huh? You wanted to take up a donation, huh? You gotta catch a warm day. Have a new business. Trustee Bonner, you take that.
Okay, no business. Um, there will not be a regular scheduled work meeting on Christmas Eve, December twenty-four, according to our schedule. And discussion, I'm sorry?
Santa Claus is coming, gotta be home.
Also, I'm.
And of course, he gets up by May. And if we don't, uh, if we don't adopt this and pass this on the board tonight, we'll have to show up here for some league.
What?
We who?
Um, second item, um, under new business is discussion of consideration of and taking action to adopt or not adopt on the schedule of twenty twenty for the regular board meetings of the president, board trustees of the Village of Burnham.
We need to adopt that, right, Stan?
Yeah, you need a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to, uh, adopt the schedule for the twenty twenty regular board meetings of the president, uh, Village of, uh, Burnham trustees.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Bonner, we need a second, please?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Cap.
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
And trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion pass.
You gotta make the motion to adjourn.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook, we need a second?
Trustee Cap? Trustee Bonner? Trustee Bonner? Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, listening on the air.